Good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock. We're going to start our city council meeting. Welcome to those in the audience, welcome to staff and council members. Appreciate you being here tonight. I'm going to excuse Director Fife and Councilmember Christensen. We're going to have an opening ceremony with explanations by Councilmember Weiss. Chief, please.
All right, please. Pete Fife.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we're indeed grateful for the opportunity to be here as city leaders to discuss the city business. We ask you to be with us if your minds open and that we can do the right things. We're thankful for our city and for our citizens and all that live in this area. We ask you to be mindful, watch over police force, protect them as they're out protecting our city. We're again thankful for all we have when we see this side of Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Weiss. Moving on to item three, which is our consent items. Item A is approval of meeting minutes for May 13th, 2025 is presented. Council, have a good opportunity to learn those. Any changes or questions? All right, we have a motion, please.
Make a motion. We approve the minutes of May 13th, 2025 as presented.
One second.
I have a motion in second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Moving on to item four, which is the oath of office. Chief Wilson.
We want to congratulate Lieutenant Taylor for his promotion to Lieutenant. You want to come up and take your oath of office?
Yes.
Lieutenant Taylor, raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I state your name.
Aye, Nick Taylor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge.
And that I discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Thank you.
Lieutenant, we'd like to congratulate you as councilors. Lieutenant, we'd like to congratulate you up here.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Do you want some pictures?
Looked up the whole crew.
That's good.
Ready? Perfect.
Understood. Thank you. We're proud of all of our officers and we appreciate working for Harrisville. It's a privilege that you choose to be here. We know that. Thank you. Item number five, which is our business items. Item A is a public hearing to hear public comment for Pandora Games Resolution 25-06, which is the amendment to budget for fiscal year 2024/2025. Going to need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion when you open the public hearing.
One second.
All right. Make sure we're doing it right? All right. I'm sorry, Jill.
I did it proper.
All right, so I have a motion in the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Then I'm going to have to turn the time over to Jenny Knight to explain what this would be. Right?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So we have prepared for you. Jill has worked tirelessly to go through all of our budget as we neared the end of our fiscal year. And we are doing, we're approaching this a little differently. She's here to answer any of your questions, but rather than having a broad revenue amendment and expenditure amendment, we have called your attention to each line item that we are adjusting in the budget. And she's provided that for you. If you have any questions about that, she can answer. Again, this is the public hearing to take comment on those amendments.
Do you have any questions before we?
Can we ask questions after you do march through?
I'm going to go through it. So we have, as you can tell, we've received a lot more revenue than anticipated, which is fabulous. So we just wanted to fix that, capture it, so we can put it where it's needed. So down at the bottom is the expenditures. We have a couple that, for example, are part-time wages for the admin. We are moving some amounts from there into our auditing and accounting services for extra support, as we use them a lot this last year. Also, we're moving some money from, let's see, the police benefits to equipment and a couple of larger amounts from our sewer and storm sewer to, as they were projects for the new public works building. So we're going to transfer those amounts that were budgeted and put those where the expenditures were, which were the capital facilities, or the capital project, sorry. We actually did really good with our budget. There was just some little things here and there. As you can tell, as you go through, animal control kind of went up, so we made some adjustments. Our building inspections, if you look, you have them in the revenue and in the expenditures. Those are just pretty much a pass-through. We received a whole lot more building permits than we anticipated for the year. So some of the things are a little harder to predict, but we actually did really well this year with those. And that also affects our fine check fees. That's pretty much a quick gist through. And this is just tentative. When we begin on the 24th for the final, there are some items that did get put in and pissed out. So we want to make sure with our auditor that it's done accurately. So we want to make sure we're doing things right so we can be compliant with the state.
All right, so we will pause. Any questions from the council on this? And then have anyone from the audience that has any comments. And we're going to have a motion for to close the public hearing.
I'll make the close of public hearing.
One second. Motion is second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion is now closed, or the hearing is now closed. Thank you for the motion. Now, Council, do you have any questions for Jill or Jenny? All right, thank you to all of the department heads, Jill, especially for putting this together. I know it's a lot of work and time. We appreciate it. All right, moving on to item B. This is a public hearing to hear public comment for and against fiscal year 2026 executive municipal officers' compensation increase. I'll turn the time over to Jenny this time first.
Thank you, Mayor. This is required under state law. Anytime the executive officers team is receiving any type of additional compensation, the state requires us to have a public hearing. Included in the next fiscal year, the fiscal year 26 budget is a 3% total and up to 2% merit increase for these officer positions.
Which is included in the budget already.
Yes, those numbers are already excluded in the budget. I'll be there for that last meeting.
All right, any questions?
Just a clarification of what we're doing here. I know it's increased in the budget, but is it just from merit pay? Is it just because things have to go up?
It includes a 3% total.
It includes a 3%.
And then a to up to 2% merit increase.
No, based on any ballots?
Yes.
All right, could I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion when we open the public hearing for fiscal year 2026. Executive Municipal Officers' Compensation Increase.
Got a motion in second, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you. This is an opportunity, once again, for anyone on the public to come and address the council. Okay, I have a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
One second. All in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, item C, which is our YCC presentation. We have a couple of members here tonight. We have Josh Spar and Riley Metzer. Which one of you would like to vote first?
Come on up. She's going to first.
All right, so.
Introduce yourself a little bit.
Okay, so I'm Riley Metzer. I'm 14 and obviously on the U.C. Council. I'm presenting for the design team that we went to. It was just a small group of us, about four, including Elizabeth Nansen. And to just elaborate on that, that was just about team building and how to execute like a project for service in our community. So those are the three of us that went, excluding Elizabeth. And that was a, okay, so that was one of our projects, not projects, rotations workshop. And that was part of a team building thing that we, we all kind of just went around and we had to do a bunch of different things. And that was at the dance that we did. So we learned how to swing dance from these great people. They were all just super nice, but they taught us how to swing dance and that was super fun. And I think that was a great opportunity to cooperate just in partnerships. So that was great. That was, I think, our closing speech. And they did a great job on that, like presenting and they, I don't know. It's just the whole thing was like super cool and I got a lot from it. Like I learned a lot of teamwork and we learned what went into team building and what makes a team and how to cooperate within that team. And that was another one of our workshops, one of my favorites. We had to, I don't know, we got up in pairs and then we had to figure out how to cross through one way and then cross through a different way. But it was like you could only walk one way and then you had to switch and then walk the other way. But you couldn't, I don't know, it was crazy. I didn't understand it. That was another team building exercise, obviously. We had to build the highest tower and we didn't do that. Or our team did not, but yeah. That was, again, the crossing of the room. It was super fun.
Question.
Yes.
About how many, how many people were in attendance overall? About how many different cities did that represent?
About 75 people overall, because that was where it capped out. But I think it covered like quite a few councils and 4-H groups. But yeah, I think maybe like 10, 15. But I don't know, we all came in like super small groups. Like we had one girl, her name was, I think, Addie. And she came and stayed with us, because I think she was the only person in her council. And she was only 12, so we were like, that's crazy. Like crazy young, but yeah, about 15.
Where was this held?
This was Helen Price, so a few hours away. It was really fun, though. The campus was a lot smaller. It was at Utah State University. And it was a lot easier to get from our dorms to the actual like student center where we did all of this, but yeah. It was super cool. We all learned a lot. And I think overall it was just great. And we learned, I don't know, just a lot about all this.
Wonderful. Thank you for your report.
Yep.
Josh.
I'm Josh Spar. I'm 17. Also, I'm the Parisville U.C. Council. And I'm doing, I'm doing, I'm doing the report on the butterfly project. So, May 27th, we went to Jenna Andrews' house. And there with seven kids and three adults, including Jenna Andrews, we helped her with 327 butterflies. Nope, it was about the truth. But yeah, so, like, I can't remember, but in this picture, you can see the sleeves. We have plastic sleeves that we were supposed to put them in there and the butterflies into along on top of the acid-free paper. And we would either pick them up gently with our hands or use tweezers and we'll put them in there and then any information that we had on the papers. So, yeah. So Abby and she shared with us how, what she does and how she came across the collection. And she told us about how George Andrews' colle- Andrews Co., sorry, had collected for years and then his widow didn't know what to do and, but, and then she met Jenna Andrews. And now, so, and then we made it. And yeah, sorry. And we helped her with packaging them so that we can get them to the Natural History or the U. The U.C. Museum. Yeah, Natural History Museum, Utah. So, yeah. Fortunately, there weren't too many of the cool, colorful butterflies that we did, but there were some very interesting ones that we did. We had some from Harrisville that we did. And let's see here, I don't know where that one was from, but yeah. But yeah, we also had some from Japan and like all around the world. He collected many. And he would put them in these trang- in these pieces of paper that he pulled it up in Excel and would put them in here with information of the sex of the butterfly, the name of the butterfly, and where it was caught, plus any other information that he had on it. So, for example, one of the, or one or two of the Japan butterflies had been written on saying that it was a possible new species in Japan and/or migrated to there. So, and that's part of what was needed to know history. The butterflies contain information on their wings, which is what we were really trying to make sure we had, is four winged, the front wing, four and back wing, and up it. And on there are scales of butterfly. And how they would do it is they would scrape off and analyze it and know what the butterfly liked to hop on a or wanna and find different areas where they might find these specific butterflies and what plants might have been in that time period. There's like some from 1970 something, I think. But yeah, so she, Jenna Andrews told us that he would, he apparently would collect them himself, go around collecting, hunting them at, or, yeah. Every time, or he would be trained, or he'll be training them with other travelers or something. Yeah, so, so we would, so the collection was like 4,000? Yeah, 4,000? So that it was, he had a large collection. And Jenna said that he had pretty much a coffin size of them. And there were a lot of cool ones in there. So, any questions?
That's great. A good report. Thank you, Josh. Moving on to item D. Discussion Possible Action to Accept Irrigation Company Agreement. Jenny.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the other part of the table agreement from the formal special service district meeting. Based on, or do you want it to be in attendance?
So we need to table this. I make a motion to table the next.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Item E. Discussion Possible Action to Accept the Authorization Assignment and Assumption of a Master Development Agreement for Some of Your Developments. Jenny Knight.
Thank you, Mayor. So included in your packet was this agreement to transfer the master development agreement. Under the clause in the current MDA, we are allowed to transfer that assignment to a new individual. We received this application from the current owner requesting that that be transferred to Cody Reese Construction. And we also have a letter from Cody Reese Construction asking for that to be transferred as well. And so this, under section 14 of our current MDA, permits this assignment of rights and obligations to be transferred to a new ownership. And that, and this is the formal assignment of that.
Council, any questions on this? Do we have the plot map or anything like that over there? I just.
You don't have the current MDA pulled up. It is referenced in this agreement. And this, they knew owner would be under the same obligations as the current.
Okay. All right, are you ready for a motion, Jason?
The question, do these typically happen where they change ownership?
In our experience, this is the second time we've made a change in that ownership. But that moment was a little different because we reinstated the MDA, so we made different changes to that. So the new owner signs that new MDA. This one's staying intact. The MDA is actually not changing on this. We're just changing the assignment of who's responsible to construct and complete the project under the master development agreement.
This has been greenlit, hasn't it?
Yes, it's received final approval through the subdivision process in January-ish.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. We're ready to go. Okay, go ahead.
I was going to say, I think you're waiting for the other show. You have to put default. I'll make the proposal that we accept or adopt our accepted authorization assignments for the assumption of the master development agreement for some of your development.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in second. This is needing a roll call. Councilmember Willison?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. Item F. This is a discussion possible action to adopt Resolution 25-03, which is a resolution granting an electrical, an electric utility franchise in General Utility Eastman and Rocky Mountain Power. Jenny Knight again.
Thank you, Mayor. As you may remember, we had this on our agenda last month and we adopted the franchise agreement, but the terms for that agreement were left open. We didn't include that in our motion. We also have Kirk Nygaard here with us this evening from Rocky Mountain Power. If you'd like to have some additional detail on the franchise agreement, and he's happy to address the council on that.
Kirk, my friend, approach. The council, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So just in general, fortunately I wasn't here last time. You guys were so efficient when he got that adopted. And so generally on these franchise ordinances that we have in place, it just kind of sets the framework of property rights, of your right-of-ways and how we function in those right-of-ways with our assets. The nice benefit on a franchise agreement that kind of sets the landscape and rules on how we work together with the city as well as providing power to the city. And interestingly enough, I always laugh, most of the times we discuss franchise agreements are when we renew them. We've had hundreds of years of working with our cities. We tend to work well. Rarely have we ever pulled out a franchise agreement and figured out what our rules are. We have a strong partnership with our communities and work well with them. I think the nice benefits that you will have in that franchise agreement is those assets that are in the public ways for city convenience. If you need to have our assets moved or changed through streetwear and things like that, that is at Rocky Mountain Power's expense for the city's convenience. And so we are definitely willing to work with you guys and to work in that situation. The other nice thing on that is if we have an emergency, looking at the police, if we have something similar to that inland hurricane that we had, where we had lots of lines down, lots of power out. Some cases, in some communities, it took weeks to restore power. We're not going out trying to permit. We can get our crews out and actually restoring power immediately in those emergency situations that are outlined in that agreement.
Council, you have any questions? Mr. Nygaard? Any?
No, he's great. Thanks for filling in the pieces of what's in front of my house.
All right, thank you.
And then I think also with the term, Jenny kind of asked the range of type of, you know, the years typically do you want a franchise agreement? They range from five to 50 years, kind of a, in that range. We've recommended 20 years. There is a provision in the franchise agreement that there are changes that need to be made. We can amend those. So it's not, it's not a locked-in agreement per se. It just takes less administrative time on everybody's part on the renewal process, less resources.
So do we have a timeframe that we're working with? So we're recommending 20? Okay, sorry, that was recommending the 20-year. All right, just so the council's fair. Henry?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So if there's no more questions, I'd like a motion, please, and continue to include the time for me that we are having this resolution.
I'll make a motion to be adopt Resolution 25-03, a resolution granting an electric utility franchise in General Utility.
I'll make a motion to be adopt resolution twenty-five dash zero three, a resolution granting an electric utility franchise in general utility Eastman to Rocky Mountain Power in term of twenty years. I'll second.
All right, thank you. I have a motion in a second. Uh roll call please. Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to item G, discussion possible action to adopt resolution twenty-five dash oh five, which is an interlocal agreement for technical forensic services. Mrs. Cheepleson?
So it's time again to renew our MOU with county for CSI. This will be a five-year um agreement with provisions to to, to uh for both parties to get out if, if things aren't going the right way or we see somewhat different or a different way that could be what CSI does. This also will renew every five years unless it's contested. So if, if either party doesn't contest it or, or wanna change it, it'll just renew um every five years up until, at least twenty forty-five.
So did they base this like they used to on call volume and population?
Yeah, yep, still the same. It's the call volume of the last five years and populations.
Five. Guessing that's steadily increasing for us?
Yes, yes, this year was actually a, a bigger increase than what it has been in the past. But there's no, for the cost, the cost to city for this, it's, there's no way to do what they do for, for the amount that we've got.
The services that they provide.
Yep.
We couldn't train our own people to do what they do without all the equipment.
They're available twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year or so.
Are they pretty much in interlocal agreements with most of all cities?
So all of Weaver County and Morgan. Morgan uses them.
How do you get a first name?
Yep. Well, it's just the cost sharing tools at the end of the day.
Anything else? Anything else?
Not necessarily any questions.
Counsel, I'm sure you have any questions. Uh, G, a motion please.
I'll make the motion that we adopt uh for an election twenty-five dash oh five, an interlocal agreement with a technical forensic services. Second. Or five years.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. I also need a roll call on this. Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries also. Item H, it's a follow-up discussion on the spring fall cleanup. Senator Schinzel, go ahead.
Mayor, I'm glad you all got a memo. Um and hopefully the attachments to that. We had a very successful sprinkling up. We were able to track it very closely. Um as you can see, we had to turn nobody away for non-residency. It was very, very good and well prepared for that. So um as the numbers came back, it was roughly with overtime dump fees, a little over five thousand dollars. Um and again, this just opens up for the discussion for how we want to handle the fall cleanup. Is that something that we want to look at doing a one-time look into doing the full trash once a year and being able to track it a lot better, being able to um manage it as we have lock and secure facilities now? Again, just a discussion amongst you guys how you could let us to proceed forward. We'll do however we advise by council. And it doesn't have to be a decision at this moment. It is something that can be thought of over the next few months.
Justin, did you get any comments back from the participants on where, when we were swinging over this way versus over time?
They were very pleased with the setup this, this time. They didn't feel like they had to just heat things over to the garbage, the end of the dumpsters. We had bins and equipment to, to then fill those bins. And did save, I, we heard a lot of feedback from the residents that just the ease of how, how to discard their, their green waste was a lot easier.
Did they feel flowed better than what they had asked?
Yeah, I, I can't say that. I, they just, the, the comments we got was all the ease, the ease. So how, how that, does that flow? Is that, I, I can't say for that. It was just the ease of having a designated spot to go dump in. And then they were just dumping it off their trailer and, and not having to heat it into the, into the dumpsters.
Yeah. Point seven, just the green waste only?
Um chatter here and there, but nothing solved at formal complaint. Um you know, you see little clips on social media that it wasn't a whole thing after things begin. It's, it's all relative based off of what off, what services we want to offer.
Life for one, appreciate what your crews did for me. You know, all three trinkets of, as far as I'm concerned, divisive weeds. Yeah, look at my backyard. It looks like sand traps all over the place, brown sand traps. But the fact was, as I was able to pull up, your, your uh employees were over there helping. But the fact was, as I was able to dump and go and made, made my life just great. You know, I just, I hauled it twice is one thing. Hauled it three or four times and nothing helped me. That's another game plan. So the facility, what you offered for services was great and my coot is off to what your crew did. That made it an outstanding experience, not just for me, but for what I saw too. So thank you very much. So if we were to do a, a green, a trash in the fall, you guys would still be?
Yes, we would set up multiple, so this time we only set up one bin. Uh but we had the concrete blocks to set up multiple bins, kinda separate trash from green waste. Um and, and other various things. Um it would be very much like we would not, we would not allow tires, certain things that are an excess fee. Paint, all those things that are excess fees, but anything that definitely, refrigerators would be on.
Batteries, yeah.
Batteries, yeah.
So we don't control that?
We would control that. Again, again, as girl we said this year, I would have employees out there adding that. Um the whole time it's open, we check IDs for um utility bills for residency. We then would show them what to dump. We visually watch as, as we're dumping and kind of help them. So we know what's coming and going and it's, it's monitored.
I would say given world, not trash in the fall. I think it's a good thing, especially if we can control it. And I think that's the big thing, is control for municipal residents. And I think you took a, I mean, it took a huge hit as far as what the community wanted to use Harrisville for the dump site. You know, for freebies. Yeah, you know, I've seen mattresses now still hanging on the side of people's yards. And so something like that, I think it were offered was a here to fall cleanup. I think they would appreciate that. But I know that they have to be able to, to be accountable for, for toxic waste. We can't, we can't put that in. Well, it'd, it'd save us a fortune with you being there because every time they're dumping in and they take it, we get charged. So this way we can say no, if you can't, you can't put that in. Well, with your people there, when something comes in, you can say, no, we can't take that. You can take all this, we don't like this, but I'm sorry, this was yours. Yeah, I would suggest we go, my feeling is uh for the fall and do it in the trash control.
I disagree. I think we just spent five thousand dollars on green waste and in the past, you said both dumps cost about seven with the increased price. That's just setting us up for money that we should have to spend to dump somebody else's waste. It's a service we provide. So if we want them to clean up their gardens and things like, have a place for that, that's fine. But I think if, if they want to dump their trash, they need to take that to the dumpster themselves. They need to take that to the transfer station. We are not a charity service. They need to pay for their own trash. It's a huge tax on the city. It keeps adding up and adding up and adding up and we, we're not, we're not a charitable organization. We have to run the city like a business in some aspects and I think people need to be responsible for their own trash. So that's my opinion.
Karen, what's your thesis as far as on fall cleanup?
So on fall cleanup, if we wanna try the, the green waste again, again, to help people clean up their gardens and to get, you know, the yards ready for, for snow and things like that. That's a different story because then maybe we're looking at closer to what we spent this time with overtime and the dump fees. But if we add trash to that, we're, we're gonna get everybody's trash that they held in their yard next to their dumpster for a month to come dump that, to not have to be charged extra or to dump their own stuff in, in the trap, at the transfer station.
So what would you feel if we put a fee?
Well, at, at, at that point, a fee, if we're gonna be paying a fee, we need to go dump it at the transfer station because we're still charged a dump fee. We're not going to, we're not gonna be charging what it costs us to dump that.
It's not gonna be, you're never gonna get ahead of this. All we're doing this is for the, for the convenience of the city.
Yes, it's a service to the city.
And every city around does.
But as things change and the cost of living changes, there are certain things we have to consider living up. And that's, this is an easy thing to, to, to change. I, I, I honestly don't care that other cities provide that. It's a nicety that we do it and to continue with green waste is a different story than continuing, than, than having, what'd you say, five dumpsters and then we have ten next time because we have trash also. We, I know that we're not gonna keep ahead of it, but if we charge a fee, we're again not gonna get what it costs us to dump that. That money has to come up somewhere and that's the budget that could go somewhere else.
Do you think having consistency with, we took everything before and then we stop them right now and now it's laboring waste? If you go back and forth, that's maybe a confusion. If we just continue to go forth with just the green waste, maybe now's the time to do that. If that's what you're aiming towards, is to already cut them off?
Well, and because it is, you know, more of a slippery slope because then we add stuff back and then, you know, more and more services for, I don't know. I, I just don't agree with continuing to run the city. You know, providing services that are niceties and not necessities. Providing the green waste, I think, is still offers that medium ground where we are providing a service to the citizens. It is a nicety. But we're, we're still holding them accountable for the trash that they produce and which when you have to pay your own bills, you, you, you tend to try to be more cautious and more conservative in what you do and what you produce.
Do you guys want to think about this from making a decision tonight? Do you want to? Justin, is there any more information? Could we get more?
Um that's just the numbers that we've had that's still in checking we've done. We definitely can look into some more things. There wouldn't be more than five dumpsters. It's just the frequency of how, when they come and pick them up and haul them up, which there is a lot more in, in the hundred percent aspect. There, there's a lot more coming and going and picking up with the full trash service and their fees are.
Right. I wasn't saying that we have ten lined up, just total dumps, yes.
Couldn't we get the dumpster from?
Waste management. Waste management.
Do you know, we have a fee included in this. What are you, what are you telling me?
If, if you guys add a fee, we have to put on the fee schedule and if I correct Jenny, if we create a fee, we have to do somewhat of a
Study?
Study for it. So just as a heads up, if that's what you wanna do.
When we have to provide receipts and all of that stuff as well, once they come through? So it makes the process longer and more complex.
And then you'd have to look to see if you want a credit card.
Yep.
You'd have to have someone there. Cash, you're gonna have to have someone there.
We don't, yeah, we don't necessarily have a portable way to take money. So I'm thinking through, they would have to come here and get some kind of a pass that we then send over to the public works giving them permission to, because we take all money here at the city hall through our system.
Yes, yeah. No, I, I, with all that, I would just say let's stay with green waste. I don't think you're gonna get anything in the fall, really.
And the real, the real problematic was code enforcement issue.
You're gonna probably see a lot more trash around the city. Um a lot of people just find it, oh, guess what, there's an empty lot or guess what, there's somewhere, somewhere where nobody really pays attention. And it'll start piling up, but it's, it's a cost to the city, one way or the other, because we have to go pick it up if it's out in an abandoned area.
And that happens regardless of what, what we offer as far as dumping anyway?
Yeah. Now, why don't you say then, stay with green waste? Well, I think it's important to get a truck every year rather than pulling it out once. The fall will be once and then we have at least what's happening for the whole year. Now, I'm not worried about re-discussing it, but I'd like to see how much this is actually costing us on an annual basis. You know, we're estimating, hey, we got another two thousand that we spent last year that we don't, but now we're ahead of the game. I haven't seen a fall. Yeah, and if it balances out, at least we know where we are. Spencer, go ahead.
So I, I'm not sure what the consensus is here.
From what I understood, you're saying after that discussion, you're okay with staying with green waste? You're saying stay with green waste to get a four years perspective, a study to look back at.
Is that what you're understanding?
Oh, yeah. I, I, I understand all of it.
I'm, I'm a little bit, I'm involved, yeah, hometown initiative in Ogden.
Oh, you're a student.
And I'm a little bit skewed because of, uh, the city, Ogden city does provide quite a bit resources for volunteers to just beautify yards that normally would turn into a code enforcement nightmare. And some people just get so far behind, I think they're in it and uh they don't have the means to pay it. Funds keep building up and it's a huge relief to some people. Yeah, they're probably being dilatory and taking care of themselves, but there's those that just flat won't or can't. And it lights the city. So that's kind of my two bits. I would, I'm not, I'm not amiable, I am amenable to trying, which is just based on my experience in Ogden.
I just feel like Ogden has a bigger tax for green waste than Parrishville City. And so we have to be a little more judicious with the funds that we do have and my, and my.
You can also see the first year, if we just do green waste for the first year, see what the results are by doing that. And it's always revisit this in a year from now, correct?
That's what I feel like the consensus is.
Not only part of the equipment.
It'll be somebody else's problem.
Yes.
All right. So does that give you a feedback what you want?
You don't need a waste today and not here for the past year.
For a fall cleanup.
Fall cleanup.
On green waste only?
Yes.
Thank you. I think we have shared.
You can understand.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for that discussion. I appreciate that. Thank you, Justin. All right, moving on to item six, which is public comment. Those in audience have a chance to approach the council with any concerns in the city. You have three minutes and I'm gonna turn the dial over to anyone here.
I didn't anticipate making a comment, but I am a resident of Parrishville, Kirk Nygros, and I just wanna express seeing the, the youth city council. Uh it was a delight to hear the reports. Uh it was thirty years ago, I was uh Uh, because thirty years ago, I was, uh, I was elected as the mayor of South Augen City Council, the first one that they had. And I had a sit in front of a council and, and, and plead for budgeting for the next year for that group and I was terrified. And it's neat to see the youth being involved and I did give my card to one of the, the city youth. Uh, Rockman Power at times have had made investments in, in some of the new city councils through the cities that we serve. So definitely, I think it's possible, I'd love to see it and just, just running, uh, seeing the reports. So thank you so much for your support for youth city council, nice talking to you, you're a resident. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate all the comments. And if that's, anyone else wants to approach us, uh, we're moving on to item number seven, which is mayor council follow-up. I'm gonna ask the directors first, I'm with Chief Wilson.
We're heading into our busy time, uh, seems like accidents have been on the rise. But, uh, causal services have been going up since the summer started. Perivation process, uh, system chief Moore's, uh, over sixty percent done. Um, we are currently doing interviews to fill two spots in the police department. Uh, our last, our last hire decided this job wasn't for him, so, um, we're looking to replace him and, and the one for July. And me and Lieutenant Taylor had a chance to go to Golden, Colorado a couple weeks ago and, and get all this trainer that we were talking about. Uh, I'm really excited about it, I, after going up there, I see, um, twice the uses for it after, after going through it. And seeing how it works and how the system works, so I'm really excited to start implementing that into the system. Especially with two new guys for FTO and stuff, I think it will be, be a great thing. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Director Schindel?
Tis the season for development. We haven't seen, um, Van Longen actually has three different crews and two different companies out there doing three different phases. Um, as we just kind of amended some of these tonight and anticipating a pretty quick construction, so I'd be, and then in the next month or so, um, out on highway Dixon Creek is going vertical, um, out on Washington, sorry, um, Dixon Creek is going vertical. We are, I have, as we didn't really discuss, it's kind of out of this body, but, uh, the irrigation systems we have running in both Ashford, Goanmore and Hall. So those are keeping us, giving us water turns at all hours of day and night that we all know that they have. Um, and just another family promises that it's going in kind of through church. They will be doing some utility work next week, so they will have eleven hundred doors shut down. So just so everybody's aware, there will be social media posts and out on our website, but I get a, an actual date with a map. Uh, so that will happen next week and that should be only a couple days to type soon, water goes for water utilities into that, that will cost.
So when you say closed, are we talking Highway eighty-nine two?
No.
You live in here?
Washington Boulevard two one fifty.
Okay, just.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, and we'll have a map and there'll be a detour down Washington Lane and thirteen hundred North Mill that runs in. One other thing, and I think Jenny will probably explain a little bit more, but next month we're looking at having an open house at the new public works facility. They moved in and excited about that, so wonderful building and we don't feel like we're stepping on each other's toes in a pretty grand office space.
Has anybody got a loss?
Okay, thank you, Justin, um, Jenny?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to draw your attention to our, we've entered the busy season for the city for the next couple of months. So just a couple of notes on meeting schedules. We've, we're calling a special session on June twenty-fourth to adopt the amendments for the fiscal twenty-five year budget. As Justin mentioned, we are planning a public open house for the public and the council will list it as a work session, so you're all welcome to attend. We'll list as open house over at the public works building on July eighth prior to city council. So we'll probably have the open house from five to six-thirty and then give you time to come over to the city hall for the regularly scheduled council meeting. We're also asking if there is interest from the council to meet in a combined work session with the planning commission to discuss the affordable housing ordinance that we've been working on with planning commission. We feel that before we give a recommendation from the planning commission, we'd like to get some input from the council on the direction that that's going. That would be held at the regularly planning, scheduled planning commission meeting night of July ninth. If you have interest in me, we've been, this is the first month that we are not having a work session. We're giving the planning commissioners a break, we're also giving our legal team opportunity to review where, where we're at. But I think that it would be beneficial for you all to give input in a work session format before the planning commission finalizes that document that's owned to you. Then I think Jack sent out an email about our August month. So August will be holding meetings, August fifth will be the truth and taxation hearing. This again is just, we were hoping we'd have our certified tax rate by today, but we did not receive it yet. Uh, so we will hold our truth and taxation, this is to maintain our rate. Again, this is not proposing an increase, it will be advertised as a nominal increase for people to maintain our rate, we're assuming. Unless our growth is gonna make the certified tax rate maintain on its own. So we will have more of that information coming, but that would just be the public hearing at seven PM on August fifth. Because we have to hold a primary election, we received six declarations for candidacy at the end of last week. We will be holding a primary election, so in, out of respect to the candidates that are running for office, we will not hold that regularly scheduled meeting on August twelfth, we'll postpone that to August nineteenth at seven PM. And because of Weber County's schedule for campus, we will canvass that election on August twenty-sixth at seven PM. So all of those dates will need a quorum to be in attendance. Uh, with the exception to the planning commission work session, we would not need a quorum there, but if you have interest, please email me or text me, let me know how you feel about that, um, so that we can get it appropriately noticed.
Don't go anywhere. That's perfect, thank you, Jenny. Uh, Max, do you have anything?
Um, no, other than back in two thousand one, we had a gentleman shooting a couple of our officers. Uh, tried to make parole last month, so they at least had a mess of life in prison.
Okay, thank you. Rover?
No, just reporting back, mosquitoes are out, doing well. They did discuss that apparently there's a, an area out west where there was a trench and they have figured out that all of a sudden there's like, what is it, three thousand or square feet of water. Just perfect for migrant mosquitoes, so they've gone out and basically taken care of that. But they're really on top of it and from what we're hearing, mosquitoes right now are down, are not down, but minimized. But, uh, you know, as my son says, they're out counting mosquitoes and that's true there. But no, from the mosquito standpoint, things are well and so our service calls, uh, coming from every city of what they need, they're minimal, so that's a good thing.
Yeah, thank you for serving that part. Karen?
Um, just that one of the applicants for the planning commission has moved away from the city, so no longer available. I think that's it.
Alright, thank you. Steve?
Um, I just, everyone else covered everything that I had on my mind, except that we did have a senior election today. Um, fortunately our numbers have dropped about half, I don't know what the deal is today. Uh, we'll look forward to having youth council serving us lunch next week and people are not too young to be considered senior citizens without lunch and they can come. Um, we had a great meal today, it was, it was fantastic, those that came enjoyed it, but I, I'd like to see our numbers improve on that. So if you can, uh, let your friends and neighbors know that those are, those are there. Um, it is, the main dishes provided, then we expect everyone else that's coming to provide, um, a potluck for that. But we had a, a good time and I appreciate the partners have now stepped up and are doing that, so I'd like to go to support them and that. And then with that, we have an hour meeting and I'm, of course, pretty excited. Uh, so could I get a motion to adjourn?
Oh, move.
Second. All of these.
Hi.
Alright, thank you, that motion carries. Thank you all.